Initiative this year. For those of you that are here for the first time, welcome. We started last month with a town hall for one of our schools. And that's what we started with the initiative to get started on a special education forum, which is going to be driving the work that we're going to be doing for the rest of the year. We have translations in Spanish. So if you want to be able to hear the presentation and the information in Spanish, please let us know and we'll make sure that we pass along one of these pieces for you. We also are very grateful that we have a board member with us. We have two, very. So we have, thank you and welcome to trustee Jessica Tow and trustee Angela DeRavos. Now, we are trying almost.
We also have trustee Ish.
So in Zoom, which is the first time that we're trying this.
You're very lucky.
We have trustee Amy Ish with us through Zoom. So as you can see, this is a board priority. This is definitely something that we want to be able to continue to do. So we're very grateful that you're here. Child care is provided. To get us going, we also have SELPA here with us. And I want to thank Patty Banks for being here. And I'm going to.
Okay, so as you see on the agenda, it's me now. I'm Deanna Scott. I am the director of special education. And what we have been hearing a lot about our staff, like when are we going to get more staff? Where are they coming from, that kind of thing? So I just wanted to give you a small update on that. We did hire five registered behavior technicians or behavior technicians that are registered with the Board of Behavioral. Help me out.
Behavior analyst certification board.
Thank you. You never get the letters right. So we have one at El Gabo right now. There will be two at El Gabo starting when we get back from winter break. We have one at Roosevelt right now where our class is there. She is currently in one of the classes. And then the other three will be dispersed to some of our other special education classrooms to help with the structure and to help with the behaviors that we see in the classroom. So the two that have been in our classrooms at El Gabo and at Roosevelt have done a phenomenal job already. We are seeing a lot of good improvement and shaping of our kiddos. And so it's been great. So we're looking forward to having our other three. We had two start today and then another one may start when we get back. So everybody is wondering about our physical therapists and our OT, our in-person people. We did hire an in-person physical therapist. She will be with us, I believe, January 23rd. And then we also, I thought I hired an OT. But I got the news tonight that she decided to go elsewhere. So I'm very sad about that, but the agency is looking for another OT for us to start after winter break. Yes. That was, the OT is a bit of bad news. I just heard that late this afternoon. But they will continue to work on that. We are continuing to work on an in-person speech and language pathologist for El Gabo on site. And we do have another special education teacher over at the El Gabo on site. So they are almost fully staffed over there. So that's really nice. And we are staffed with parents as well, which is really nice for us too. We are looking into the future and we are currently advertising for more behavior analysts to move throughout the district. So they will be assigned to specific school sites to be able to help supervise our behavior technicians and then give some gen ed support as well. So right now we have two behavior analysts for the whole district and they're running quite rapidly from place to place. So we want people to have really a lot more time with our behavior analysts to be able to consult with them and to set up some systems in all of ours. Okay? So that leads us into our compensatory education. I have heard that some people were asking about that. I did, we did send home letters from the special education department explaining how that happens. So if your child missed services because we did not have a staff member, for example, we don't have one SLP yet. We have all of our other ones, but we don't have the in-person one for El Gabo. So anybody that would have speech services over at El Gabo and that has missed them, you should have gotten a letter. And in that letter, it would state that you just need to call us and let us know that you would like that compensatory education. We can try to get it done when we hire someone. Your other options are to just call us and let us know you have someone that you would like to provide those services and we can contract with them. Or you can pay them and we can reimburse you. So you just need to call the special ed office and say, hey, my child doesn't have a speech therapist and I need compensatory education. Same thing for OT.
What number should they call, Deanna?
Eighteen one.
Well, the district office is seven five three fifty six.
Seven five three two two one one.
Is there like a list if people do seek out their own and fire qualifications? If they're going to pay them in reverse?
We don't have a list. They do have to have the California certification for a speech and language pathologist. And they do, we prefer those we hire have a credential as well. But those that if we have to go out into the community, they have to have the state certification. Okay? So if any of you are here from Monterey Park, you know that your SLP is leaving. Don't worry. She's retiring. She's having a great life after us. And we have Karen Tamayo who's coming in and she will start right up, right when we come back from break. So there will be no absence services.
El proceso como cuánto se tarda más o menos de que nosotros encontramos un proveedor? Porque el ocho de noviembre mandé el correo con toda la información del proveedor para OT, pero aún no he recibido respuesta. Como cuánto se tarda más o menos?
The question is how long does it take? Go ahead.
Yeah, so how long does the process take? Because we have found a provider for OT, but was November eight? No, we're.
Noviembre ocho en diez, correr todos los datos.
On November eighth is when I sent in the email with all those, all that data. But how long would it take for the reimbursement to take place?
We just need them to submit, or you just submit the hours for reimbursement and we will get it to you right away. So if you don't have it yet, I will ask my administrative assistant if you've turned in the hours for reimbursement. Unless you wanted us to contact directly.
In order for us to contact, contract directly, then they have to have some certain qualifications like, you know, they have to have their, we have to have the fingerprints on file and things like that. And we might have to wait a little while for that to go through.
Sí, eso, este envíe todos los datos. Bueno, el lugar de Monterrey me dijo que si tenían que hacer como un contrato directo con ellos y que tenía que mandar la información este directamente. Y pues sí lo hizo, pero no recibió. La única que me contestó fue la directora de El Gavila, que tenía que enviarle esa información a Diana, pero tampoco he recibido respuesta.
Okay, so they did, the place in Monterey did say I would need to have a direct contract with this person. I did send the information directly and the principal at El Gabo, Diana?
No, that's me, Deanna Scott. I am the director of special ed.
No, what principal at El Gabo?
Me dijo que tenía que enviar la información a Diana.
We need to send that.
Yes, send it to me.
Sí, eso soy yo.
Send it.
Yes.
And you can call Bianca at the number I gave you.
Puede llamar a Bianca el número que les.
Okay.
Disculpe por mi ignorancia. ¿Cómo ustedes consiguen a los terapeutas como por decir el de OTEA? Que no tenemos ahorita, ¿cómo lo consiguen ustedes?
¿Terapeuta de OTEA?
Oh, sí, el que no falta es lo que están hablando ahorita, ¿no? Es el terapeuta de OTEA.
Okay, are we speaking about speech therapists right now? And excuse me, excuse me for my ignorance. How do you guys know about hiring a person?
So we are looking right now. I'm going to answer a couple of questions.
Sorry. How you guys hire a therapist before? Before?
Okay, like just to hire them with this program?
The school, the Gabo School used to have a therapy, a speech therapy, right?
Right.
How you guys hire them before? Right now, but you guys don't have.
Right.
Yes.
So what happens? Okay, so what happens?
From where?
Yes. What happens is we put out a, an advertisement on what we call EdJoin. That is the site that most school people go to to find jobs. Okay? So we have posted jobs for speech and language, for OT. We just took it down for physical therapy. For teachers, we put it there. And people apply, we go through interviews and we hire. As long as they have the right credentials and if they are a good fit. Right now, we have increased from EdJoin to Indeed. So we've posted on Indeed and we have also posted on ZipRecruiter. So we've added to where we are posting so we can reach a wider variety of demographics. We see a lot of our younger people on Indeed right now. So that's where we posted. And then I've heard a couple of people say, well, why not ZipRecruiter? So I looked at that and said, okay, we're going to post on that too. So we post on that. Now, when we don't get anybody, then I go to contractors who basically can look anywhere. I mean, they send people, have people recruiting for us and then we contract with them.
Yeah, because my question was because you guys have a comment to hire somebody, you know, for the school. So it's going to be harder for the parents to hire somebody, you know, by themselves. You know what I'm saying? So you guys, you guys try harder, you know, to get somebody. Because it's going to, it's harder for the parents. You know what I'm saying?
It's harder for the parents?
Yeah, for the parents.
Oh, for the parents?
For the parents.
Okay, so parents can go to communities, community speech and language therapies. So you look in the phone book and you say, who are they?
Most of the parents work.
Right.
You know, sometimes we can't do pure work.
So would it help if we made a list to some people?
Sorry, I don't want to, I don't want it to be mean, but sometimes it's not. I'm not, I'm not speaking by myself. I'm, I don't know a lot of parents. I don't even know nobody.
Right.
I'm a little bit, you know what I'm talking about? In general.
Right. Okay, so do you want, we could give some suggestions?
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, we could give some suggestions.
If they just find somebody, you know, because they have the time.
Right.
You know, but sometimes a lot of, most of the parents, they don't have the time to look for somebody.
Okay, thank you. No, thank you for the comment. I want to direct you to the schedule where we have parent groups. So we are going to spend some time in groups tonight. And you will be talking about what's happening that's good at your site, your teachers, your IEP teams, things like that for a few minutes. And then you're going to talk about what needs help. What do we need to improve in and give us any suggestions and things like that.
Going based off of what you said as well, I'm getting, I'm in the same boat. I have two kids at Mission Park and my first grader is on her fourth speech teacher, I think, since being there. There's been no consistent, we've seen no communication at all. I'm only finding this out from her or other parents that I've met. I'm getting nothing from the district, nothing from the support.
Can you say that for the parent groups? Because we will have facilitators and they will write that down and then we will contact you.
I just want to speak for both the parents. I want to know, have you actually contacted the California Association for Speech and Language Therapists? Because they professionally would have speech and language therapists throughout the state, ones that actually have private degrees in the area so that you could help develop that list for the families. The second thing is that we're talking about fixing this year and I heard your recruitment. But are you going to any universities that are bringing out speech and language therapists? And do you know the national, the California Convention for Speech and Language Therapists is in Anaheim on March 30th to April 2nd? Do you have one of your speech and language therapists going to go and interview? Are you going to interview?
We will send someone to interview with that. We did not make the deadline for ASHA, so I will look at that. That's a great suggestion. I love it. Because ASHA was last month. So if they're having a convention in Anaheim, we will definitely look at that and recruit from that as well. I have looked at the ASHA website and they do have lists of people as well.
That'd be great to give to parents. That'd be great to give to parents rather than asking, telling them to look it up in the phone book.
True.
To develop a list for all the parents that.
Sounds like we need to develop a list and I like that.
Are doing the work to try to get their.
That is a very good suggestion. Very good. So yes, one more question.
I just want to add something else because that was really great. This is the first time I'm here and I'm a parent of a special ed child. This is not the first year that we're going through all of this, like having no teacher, no, no OT, no speech. What is the district doing to make a difference? Because this is not the first year, this is second, third year that we're going through this. So there's got to be something different that they got to do. And they got to understand that the parents are here. We're here for a reason. Because we care about our children. They're not being served how they should be. And it's not one year. This is the third year, so we got to do something about it. This can't be happening.
That's why we expanded what we advertise, the platforms we advertise on. Instead of just EdJoin, we're doing Indeed and ZipRecruiter. We also, I have attended some meetings with Cal State Monterey Bay. We've been looking at their department. They did just start a speech and language program. Their graduates will not be ready until next December. So we have also partnered with San Jose and with UC Santa Cruz. And we are looking for teachers and specialists from them as well. So we have expanded who we're looking for. We have partnered with Cal State Monterey Bay for teachers as well. We are looking specifically for our special ed teachers. We do get a lot of gen ed teachers there from there. So that's what we're doing right now. But definitely when you, if you have ideas in your groups, write them down. We will pursue them as well. Okay? Okay, so now, did I get kicked off? I am going to introduce you to Patty Banks. Patty is one of the program specialists from the SELPA. And she will be talking to you about some of the work that we've been doing this year with the SELPA and some of the parent resources that are available from the SELPA.
I'm Patty Banks. I'm from Monterey County SELPA. I don't know how many of you parents are familiar with SELPA. But hopefully after tonight, you'll have a little bit of an idea of what we can provide and what we are already starting to provide here in your district. I do want to applaud you for being here tonight and for looking out and advocating for your children as you need to and to continue to work with your district in order to, you know, have your students' needs met. As I indicated, my name is Patty Banks and that is my contact information. If you want to write it down, you can have it available. We have another program specialist in our office. That's Val Wiltse and her contact information is here as well. Just as Deanna was talking a little bit to staffing shortages here within your district. We used to be a staff of four. We're currently a staff of two. And so we are also seeing decline in difficulty in finding people to come in and work in our offices as well. These are some of the types of services we provide at SELPA. We provide consultation and support to not only districts, but also to families. We provide professional development and parent training and workshops. We provide what is known as resolving disputes or alternative dispute resolution. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that is. And we also provide program review and compliance monitoring for the districts within our county. So SELPA stands for Special Education Local Plan Area. These were created out of legislation in the state of California. California is divided into many different SELPAs and every SELPA has a little bit different structure to the way it operates. All schools within Monterey County fall under Monterey County SELPA. So we have 24 school districts that SELPA works with here in Monterey County and the Office of Education and their special ed programs. As I already indicated, every SELPA has different types of services that they provide. Our SELPA does not provide any direct services to students. We only provide those supports that I just mentioned to families and districts throughout our county. We are not a part of the Monterey County Office of Education. I think that's very confusing for people. Our offices are housed at that facility on Blanco Road, but we are a state agency that is separate from them. So as I mentioned, one of the things that we offer in the SELPA is we offer consultation and support. We can do coaching within some of the classrooms. We can do consultation in classrooms and support classrooms by request of the district. Sometimes we get calls from teachers who want support. If we do, we then contact the district and make sure that they are on board with us coming in and supporting that teacher. We do classroom environment and setup. We do classroom observations and coaching, as I mentioned. We can do demonstration lessons. We hold meetings with staff if requested and do trainings with them as well. And we can also help staff and families both with IEP preparation and support before meetings. As I mentioned, we provide some professional development as well out of our offices and on our website. You can see here on the Monterey County SELPA website. So if you go to montereycoe.org, you can find under Programs and Services, SELPA. And when you go to SELPA, you would click on this section that says SELPA Parent and Community Resources. And any trainings that we have available for families would be listed there. We also provide, as I already mentioned, services to help resolving disputes. Our main focus when this comes up is to help build rapport between families and districts. We are not an advocacy agency. We often get calls for that. But what we do is provide a liaison between the district and the family to help resolve things that they need to be addressed. And oftentimes when a family member calls us, we talk them through the process of what they need to do. And then we notify the district that the family has contacted us. But we really encourage you to keep open communication directly with your district. And so we're often just referring you back to the district with maybe some information that's based on law and best practice so that you can move forward with your district. We can't make decisions and we can't make districts do things. We can't tell you whether your child is placed in the right program. That's not our role. But we can just make sure that the process and the communication and give you tips and ideas on how to improve that. We can also be involved in meetings with families and staff or districts before IEPs. If you have questions about what you may want to do or how the meeting should go, we might be able to assist you with that. And we also help districts with designing IEP agendas and norms. We can provide program and review compliance with the district. This is not necessarily something parents are generally involved in, but we are there to support districts if anything comes up that they need to address through data and information that comes out of CDE. Okay, so what are some of the updates about what we have been doing here in Monterey County, particularly through the CAPTIN project? So I am part of CAPTIN. We have four CAPTIN cadre members here in Monterey County. CAPTIN stands for California Autism Professional Training and Information Network. And we are very active here in Monterey County. CAPTIN has been here for 10 years. Both Val and I are CAPTIN cadre members. And we have two other members in the county in two different districts that are also CAPTIN members. So let's look at what CAPTIN can do. So CAPTIN is a multi-agency organization that is funded through CDE. And it is their job to help develop and support the understanding of what is known as evidence-based practices for students who are affected by autism spectrum disorders. These practices, and some of you may not have children who are identified with autism, so I want to speak to that for a moment. Although these individual or evidence-based practices that CAPTIN promotes are researched and known to be effective for students with autism, we also know that they often help students who have other disabilities. And they also often benefit students who are in general education programs. So even though we are CAPTIN and we're promoting practices that are research-based for students with autism, we know there are benefits for other students as well. So the CAPTIN project within the state of California, and California is the only state that has CAPTIN, has a total of 440 cadre members throughout the state. There are 342 educators who have been nominated by their SELPA to participate in the project. There are 52 individuals from regional centers. So some of you may have students who are involved with SARC, San Andreas Regional Center. There are 52 individuals across the state from Regional Center also involved in CAPTIN. We have family support agencies. One of our local ones that just recently became a family empowerment center is Special Kids Connect. And so we have 37 individuals who are from those types of agencies throughout the state involved with CAPTIN. And we now have nine university members in CAPTIN. And so we're all working collaboratively as professionals to design and develop supports and programming for students within our public school systems and our communities. So what we've done, what our vision was as CAPTIN, was to develop a system-wide technical support group that helps with focusing on evidence-based practices and making sure our students are receiving evidence-based practices and those types of interventions and strategies. Okay, so the goal is to help us disseminate the information about what are the evidence-based practices? If you as a family were to Google autism interventions on the internet to find an effective strategy or program, you're going to find millions of them. Millions. And the problem is not all of them have research backing them. The ones that are promoted through CAPTIN that we are disseminating and supporting our school districts with are research-based. There's research that shows they're effective. Are they effective for every student? No. There's 28 of them that are research-backed. And if we try one and it's not effective for a student, then we look at one of the other ones. But we do know that these are research-based and we will get more outcomes, positive outcomes for our students if they're exposed to these strategies. And we've kind of already talked about that one. So what is an evidence-based practice? Like I said, it is a practice that we know is scientifically researched and is known to have positive outcomes for our students. We need to make sure that they're implemented to what's called fidelity. There are certain steps that we have to include in these practices and these strategies in order for them to be effective. If we leave a certain step out, it might still have a positive effect for a student, but not as great of an effect as if we make sure that we're doing all of the steps in each of those strategies. Right now, CAPTIN has three tiers of support. The bottom one, universal support, is any district, any person, from families to professionals to teachers can go on our website, look at the plethora of resources that are available there and utilize and read up on them. Tier two support. Tier two supports are targeted supports that we're providing in school districts. It's training and coaching. And we have started that here in this district, so we'll talk a little bit to that in a minute. And then the tier three projects is what I am mostly involved in right now. And that is creating really systemic programs so that they'll be operational throughout an entire district. And that is something that we have just started here in the county and are just getting started ourselves enrolling out in one specific district. So what have we already accomplished here in Monterey County? You see pictures here of educators who have already, through the 10 years that CAPTIN has been here, received implementation awards at the state level for use of evidence-based practices in their programs. Okay? And these are the districts we are currently working with right now. You see here on the side the current cadre for our region and who they are. And these districts are the ones that we are focusing on right now as we're rolling out a training and coaching in evidence-based practices. We had a great session today. We did a training on reinforcement. Each of our trainings will be about three hours long. The teachers that are involved in those will then get what we call cycles of coaching, where we'll go into the classroom for an hour. We'll work with them on the strategy or intervention that we just trained in. And then we will cycle back into the classroom again, or we'll meet with them, talk about what we saw, talk about ways to improve it, and then we'll cycle back through. So there'll be four cycles of that coaching. Coach, and then talk about it, coach, and then talk about it. After four cycles, we'll be able to determine whether or not that strategy is effective and whether that teacher is implementing that strategy to fidelity. And then the hope is, by maybe March, because that's when our coaching cycles will end, we'll be ready to introduce another strategy for these teachers. So the CAPTIN website has a ton of resources. If you go onto CAPTIN, you see where this red arrow is. You would be able to access information about all of these evidence-based strategies, information about upcoming trainings. We actually did a CAPTIN virtual summit earlier in the year that was regional-wide. We were actually part of CAPTIN 007, that's our region. And that encompasses Monterey, San Benito, Santa Clara, and Santa Cruz. And I have the honor of being the regional implementation lead for those four counties. So we work together once a year and do a summit that has been virtual each year. That way, we can have all parents accessing from all four counties. This is a list of other resources for families that I had hoped we would have time to go into, but I don't know if we're going to. There are copies of these links over by the sign-in table. I don't know if I have enough, but if you put your email down on those sign-in sheets, I will make sure that you get a PDF of the PowerPoint and also this list of resources that you could look at. Any questions? I feel like that was a lot of information and kind of came fast. Yes?
Yo tomé el entrenamiento de CAPTIN, este, por su, hace unos meses. Yo tomé el entrenamiento de CAPTIN, este, hace algunos meses. Y mi pregunta es, ¿estos entrenamientos se les dan a todo el personal de las escuelas? Entiendo pues que también es recursos para los padres, pero creo que es muy buena idea que todo el personal de las escuelas los tomen también para que sepan cómo tratar y diferenciar más que nada una crisis de un berrinche y sepan cómo tratar a los niños, no nada más cuando tengan VCDAs cerca. Y también sí, si les dan el entrenamiento solo, si lo solicitan o pueden hacerlo como... ¿Me dice algo con el obligatorio?
So my question has to do with, I took the CAPTIN training a few months ago. And I'm wondering if this training is something that all of the personnel will be required to take part in? Because I know it is a resource for parents, but I think it would be good if all the personnel were to have this training, because then they would be able to tell the difference between a crisis and a tantrum, even if there's no VCDAs nearby. And I'm wondering if this training is only available to them if they request it or if it's something that is, you know, obligatory?
This is something that I'm working with Deanna together to put, to put a program together. We have a service plan right now that's written to move forward with a specific evidence-based practice. We did provide training the end of July. We had another regional implementation lead provide that training. It was an introduction to CAPTIN and an introduction to autism and an introduction to what EDPs are. I'm not sure what training you were at, but I'm glad you were able to get some training through CAPTIN. We have a lot of different things that happen throughout the region. Santa Cruz does some workshops, Santa Clara. So again, if your email is on there and you're willing to have information sent to you, then you can actually access that. We are developing a program. And you know, like I said, we've been in Monterey County for 10 years, but the program has become more and more and more robust over the 10 years. So I don't, I can't speak to the requirement of it because I'm not from your district, but there is at least a core group that we're working with right now who are going to be required to take some of these classes.
Suggestion, I guess, comes up here. In the future, for your trainings, if you would throw in for parents, IEP process, and advocacy, or how to handle it? For me, throughout my life, it's been part of it where I advocated for my younger brother an IEP needs due to language barriers at that time. So we're talking about way back then. Then, in another lifetime, I was a regional center employee, so I would advocate for my case load. And now, eons later, you know, I have a godson who's part of this group. And I don't see certain things that I ask. My mother, hey, is where's the IEP, hey, this, that. Because in the beginning, I would ask her, ask the doctor his language, ask the doctor his behaviors. And all it got is, he'll outgrow it, he'll outgrow it. Until quite a she, I told her, no, stand your ground. We had a regional center come in, they did the email, and we received services. This is the second semester he's here. And I want to thank you, thank everyone, because he has done leaps and bounds with his language and with his interaction.
Yeah.
But my question is, can you offer workshops as part of this forum saying, "IEP, what is it? How should you prepare it? What behaviors are you seeing with your child? What would you like them to work on?" Because I have a couple of things that I ask, because they do the same thing. Is eating, he's very particular, and you know that. Certain things he'll eat and the rest he doesn't. They tell him, the doctor says, "Don't feed him, don't let him eat anything." Well, that becomes child abuse because you're starving your child.
So can I tell you, I think you're right on track. Those are the kinds of things we need. If you go to the SpecialKidsConnect.org, they're going to be offering eight workshops in conjunction with Parents Helping Parents from CAC. I think we learned about this last night at a CAC meeting, a community advisory committee for SELPA, which you have a representative from your district who is on CAC. We learned that they will be doing eight courses on exactly that topic, IEP preparation and all of that. So check that out. Also, if you check out our website, we have all of the different agencies that are providing workshops, and you can click on those as well. They are available. Last spring, we provided the rights law training as well, which addressed that as well. So they're out there, I think sometimes where we need to figure out how to access and get that information out. From SELPA, we don't have a list of parents. And because of confidentiality issues, we can't just get a list of parents to send things out to. So when you attend something like this, and if you want to be on a dissemination list, we can create one with your yes, then we know it's okay to disseminate information out to you. Dr. Andrade?
So this year was the return of our Parent Leadership Conference, and we held it at Los Palmas. And I was very proud of our team because we did have Deanna who said an IEP. We will be having another parent leadership conference in the spring, and that's going to be one of the topics that we will be covering as well. Yes. And they are also available in Spanish for our district.
How do we know what trainings are available for us as a parent? I'm just asking, as far as... I mean, I know that you want us to put in the name or then you would send us information.
If you go to Monterey County's, or Monterey SELPA's site and go to Parent Resources, there's a list of the ones that are offered through us. If you go to Special Kids Connect, there's a list of them there. But actually, if you go to the SELPA website, we have most of these agencies right there connected. And you can find those lists there.
I was wondering, does Selena City Elementary School District have a Special Education Parents Information Network? Usually, it's like a monthly meeting within the community to bring in different speakers, to bring in different topics. Many times, it's developed by the, by the parents decide. We would like to know about IEP process. We would like to know about going to the doctor and certain things. We would like to know about X, Y, and Z. We'd like to know about functional behavior. Whatever questions, it comes from the community and the family. And it's a, it's a support network and a place that you can always invite people in. Hey, we're having a hard time with speech and language therapists. Could we invite a local speech and language therapist that might be able to help us with connections to maybe retired speech and language therapists that we might be able to contract with? Or X, Y, or Z. It's really driven by the, by the parents and it's a support network. And so many districts have that as part of the community outreach. It's a regular, ongoing, monthly meeting. And it's also both support for the parents amongst themselves, but also an information place that anybody knows that they can go at any time. There's a letter that goes out, everyone's busy, parents are busy, and they might be like, hey, I've done that before, but oh, this is something I need to learn about with my kids. Does Selena City?
That's, yeah. So it hasn't existed up until now, this is the beginning of that.
This is day one.
So is this a monthly town hall meeting that you're going to have? Where the parents can set something up?
Well, it's going to be co-developed with our parents. So it's not, it's not set still. And that's part of what we want to have as a conference.
And we had actually anticipated doing two more in a year, but we can certainly consider monthly. If you would like that, we can consider monthly as well.
I'm a, I'm a, I'm a really, raise your hands.
Yeah.
I'm not a parent, I'm very, so yeah.
I think this is a great idea.
You know, I might help facilitate one of the meetings if you'd like.
You see, we have parents that want to facilitate that space. So it's a great idea to create a network, a support network where every month we can bring resources, trainings, information.
Perfect, and that's why we brought Patty here today. It's like, we need to have somebody kind of give some information to you as well as just the news on where we are in progress and progressing on certain issues. So we will definitely look at monthly meetings. And if on your sign-in sheet you prefer AM or PM, let us know, AM or PM for meetings, we will also look at that. Yes?
I just have a question, because we had another meeting today with my son Jackson today. What are the plans for the more kids are going to work right in episodes? Just part of not having him with some of our other children? Because Jack, today, my wife saw him on the playground, he was crushed in the face. And nobody did anything to the kid.
And it's not the first time I've seen him get kicked. I've seen him get pushed to the ground, and he got punched in the face. He gets his hair pulled, he gets pushed off the furniture. I get a call from the school that he was knocked down as his kid. And I emailed him. I emailed Mr. Daley, I emailed Mr. Dillinger. And I wasn't able to get your email, so I didn't know what to do on. And nothing has happened. My son doesn't want to go to school. I don't know, because sometimes he goes and he gets screaming because he's afraid. He's afraid.
So I would like to talk to you about that, because I was there today until about 11:00. It was during pickup?
Yep.
Okay. So we will talk about that. That is specifically why we do have a behavior technician in the classroom. And that is to help with those kinds of issues. We do have a fully staffed classroom right now, so that's nice.
The problem is, all the parents are being dragged to help two kids that need a lot of help, and they're not paying attention to Larson or anybody else's child in their class.
Okay, so we...
Which is a recurring issue.
We staff the classroom with that in mind. So the kids that need a lot of help actually have an adult all to themselves. So I need to talk to you personally about what happened. And then I will check back with our behavior technician and with the substitute that was in the classroom today. I don't know if you knew that, but...
Something needs to change quick, otherwise it's, we're going to have to go different routes.
That's what we're working on.
The first day of school, you guys lost our child for 40 minutes.
Yeah.
For over 40 minutes. No, we had to call the cops to find him.
Please let us know, please let everybody know, it wasn't at the school that he's at now.
No.
Oh. Okay. So we haven't lost him again, so that's good. But he was very happy this morning. I don't know, but I do want to talk to you about that. Yeah, so I would like to talk to you about that, though, because I want to know more about it, and then I'll need to check back with who was in the classroom.
Esa es mi principal preocupación, de que los papás ya lo formen desde que obtenemos el diagnóstico de nuestro niño. Tratamos de informarnos y educarnos lo más que podamos. Pero mi principal preocupación es esa, que el personal tenga esos entrenamientos, esa capacitación para poder manejar situaciones como esta. Y es lo que falta. No tienen, no tienen, ¿cómo se dice? Pues sí, tienen la capacitación para saber cómo...
So my main concern has to do with, well, once we get a diagnosis for our child, we inform ourselves. But what, the thing is that we are concerned about the most is the personnel. They have the training in order to manage these kind of situations, and this is what's missing.
They do have ongoing training. Our pairs have ongoing training, our teachers are getting the training right now. As you know, we have all new teachers in the autism program this year. So that was quite an experience for us. But they are getting the training right now, and the pairs are going... They've gotten training from our board-certified behavior analysts. And that is why we also put our behavior technicians in the classroom. They have gone through 40 hours of behavior training in behavior supports. And they are registered with the Board of...
Behavior Analyst Certification Board.
Behavior Analyst Certification Board. So the answer is yes. And the CAPTIN's training that we're doing now includes both teachers and pairs and the RBTs. So they are all getting the same information. And today, we had a really great session because situations were brought up, and we were able to problem solve those and able to kind of look at other ways to deal with things or what we can do, what we're doing right, and maybe improve in some other areas. I know that Mr. Daley also meets with the classrooms, with the teachers, and with the pairs on a regular basis. And our VCDAs meets with them every third Thursday or weekly.
Yeah, in the class every week, but certainly it's a structured thing.
In the classroom every week, and then structured about every third Thursday, I believe.
I would like to just offer some suggestions for the department in regards to staffing.
It's becoming a little louder, so we can hear...
Sorry. Yeah, in regards to staffing. We should have at least one...
we should have at least one SPED academic coach at each school site with the highest number of unduplicated SPED students. We need grade-level release teachers, four SPED educators, trained to be able to work with the SPED students. We need to strengthen recruitment efforts and increase signing bonuses. Signing bonuses and stipends for speech-language pathologists, credentialed SPED teachers, occupational therapists, SPED parent educators, physical therapists. Communication and transparency. Possibly create a monthly newsletter with current updates on what's happening with staffing, highlighting programs, and the good things that the department is doing. Workshops offered by Selpa, information on how parents could support their student at home, responding to questions, et cetera. And that goes along with what some parents had mentioned. Three, quality of services for all students. Ensure that classroom teachers and our educators are trained and knowledgeable of the curriculum that is being implemented. Ensure all staff are trained to identify the difference between a crisis versus a tantrum. Ensure all staff are trained to properly handle situations when students are having a crisis. Reduce speech-language pathologist NOT case load sizes. Reduce SPED classroom sizes. Strengthen recruitment efforts.
Do you have a copy of that? Can you send me a copy of that? Okay, thank you. So I did want to talk just a little bit about the curriculum for our students in the autism and the mod severe programs. They are, we have implemented what we call unique learning systems this year. And the teacher's Val, the other Selpa program specialist, is doing trainings with our teachers on utilizing that curriculum as well. And so they will be, you should be seeing work in folders. You should be seeing the unit that they are working on for this month. And then you should be seeing where they are every month. It will tell you like what skill they're working on and what level they are, where they need to go to next. Okay? So we are doing that, that is one thing. And I did want you to know as well, the GLRTs have reached out. And so our SPED department is doing trainings for them when we come back in January on how to support special ed classrooms and students. So we are doing those two things, which I forgot to tell you about. Grade-level release teachers. Okay, so this is the third time that I, this is my third meeting that I'm going to. And at this point, I'm not just posing any questions, posing questions. At this point, I'm looking for results, because parents have brought forward to you, they're making questions in the past. And at this point, I would like to talk about results. I feel that parents... And so I do want to address that. I think we've already addressed some of the results based on your concerns in providing the RBTs, our registered behavior technicians in the classrooms, providing the captain's training for teachers as well as our parent professionals. We are increasing our number of behavior analysts within the district. So those are all very good results. We have hired some difficult-to-staff positions, the teacher at El Gavilan and PT. We have also hired some speech-and-language pathologists for other schools within the district. They are virtual. That is what we could get right now. But we are still looking for in-person as well as virtual. So those are some really good results, I think, that we are having. We have increased our postings to our different platforms and reached out to the colleges and universities in the area. So those are some of the results that we're seeing right now. And I think you will see, I have seen, as I go into the classrooms, I have seen some actual results in the kids being able to follow routines and things like that. In fact, one of the things that tickled me to death the other day is we have been trying to get some of our kiddos to line up and walk in a line. And sometimes you need to use a rope that they can hold on to, so they'll all, you know, walk together. And that's been a very difficult task for one of our classrooms. And the registered behavior technician got in there last Monday. They were doing it beautifully yesterday and today. So to me, that's a win. That is something that is very exciting. Yay, we're not hurting that. But yes, it was a very exciting thing for me. We are seeing our centers, the kiddos rotating to the centers a lot better than they were before as well. Yes, sir?
Did you say that you guys are returning through many different ways? Are you guys getting the numbers or the answers that you guys are looking for? Or the specialized program, I mean, teachers or...
Am I getting what I want and everything I want, what I'm looking for? No, but I'm still pushing. I'm working with about seven agencies right now who are recruiting for us. Like I said, I'm also, we are working with the colleges in the community or in the surrounding areas. We know when their graduating classes are coming out. We are asking them to steer people our way. We are putting up, you know, our information, saying yes, we're hiring, and things like that.
I'm saying this because, you know, my child started the school year with a, with a, with a teacher. And months later, we heard that that teacher was gonna be removed. Another teacher was gonna come here, which she did. And once she's, you know, which is, she's in everything. Everything is right in fact. Next thing we heard is that she was gonna be let, you know, let go. And that's...
No, she's not. She will be there till the end of the school year.
I gave you the good news.
Yes.
You know, but you know, we're thinking ahead already. You know, parenting, you do that. We're thinking ahead and we're thinking next year. It seems like every year is a new battle for me. Every year, I have to worry to make sure that my child is a teacher, you know, a therapist for speech, for OT. So we're thinking ahead, and we worry ahead.
I worry ahead, too.
Just not having an assistant teacher throughout the school year, you know, I don't think it's good.
It's not.
For the child, for, you know, for everybody else.
For the child, for the parents.
It's not good. It's confusing. At some point, you know, it can get confusing for everyone.
Yes, and I hear that. And definitely agree with you on that, which is why we are finding ways to keep the teacher in that classroom.
So hopefully, you guys are working really hard.
We are working really hard, yes.
You can do a lot more hires from all ends and...
And I think the district as a whole, human resources, as well as our bargaining teams and everybody like that, they are working really hard at finding ways to increase our, the likelihood that people will choose us over other districts.
Is only Salinas going to this?
No, everybody is.
Everybody is?
Yes, everybody is. Yes, sir.
So, yeah, certainly, we're in a national crisis for educator period, specifically special educators and specialists. Now, something that Salinas City Elementary School District could do is use some of the money they're getting from the state right now. There is a COLA increase, as y'all know, everybody knows, who basically buy milk, eggs, anything going anywhere, you know, it's killing things. So actually, the state of California normally, sometimes doesn't even get COLA increases. But this year, Salinas City is getting 13.14% increase. That's additional of $12 million. And so right now, if you went to the board meeting, you would have heard the teachers talk about the struggle that they're having, both general education and special education. So the first thing is, is that this district needs to work with the teachers to use some of this money that was meant to go to staff, not just teachers, but classified, to help out in that way. So there's a financial component to this to make yourself more attractive. Now, Salinas Union High School District is doing some things to make sure that they stay ahead of the curve. First off, they have more money and they pay more. So they're already ahead of the curve, but they're not just relying upon that because they know there's a limited pool of people out there. So they actually are approving 11% raise earlier than summer, specifically so that it'll be on the salary. So when they go out to the schools, the universities, and everyone, and they say, hey, come to Salinas Union High School District. They're gonna have it settled. Number two, a lot of times, they'll talk about one-time monies. One thing you can do additionally to that, because you need to take care of all your educators, because as you know, a school has to run with teachers, secretaries, yard duties, bus drivers. Any breakdown affects the kids. But beyond that, if we're talking about special education right now, you can do a, you can do a signing bonus. So right now, Salinas Union High School District, $15,000 for some of these, for speech and language therapists. Do you think they're gonna get the speech and language therapists before us? Very good likelihood. Okay? There's also something else you can do with one-time monies. You want to have, everybody wants to have a regular salary. But sometimes, in the middle, sometimes you don't have ongoing money. So that is a true thing. You can't budget things on-term. But things like COLA, that's ongoing. That amount's gonna be moving forward. The other thing you can do is do retention bonuses. And that's something you want to do, because there's not enough people out there. So you need to retain whatever special education you have. Because some of you don't have it, and some of you are getting something great because those teachers, aides, speech and language therapists, all the different specialists, they're working their butt off and they're covering for the holes. And so they need some relief, so they need some new people to come on. They need people that are trained. There's a whole aspect of everything we're talking about that's completely there. But you can't train somebody that's not there. You know, you can't make up for a teacher that's not there. You can't make up for aides that are not there that behaviorally help the kids. So with that, the district needs to be forthcoming and basically make it more attractive for the people to first stay, but also attract new ones. And so you're already behind the eight ball. So the school board should really be directing the administration to come and work with the teachers, get something done, so you can get out there, recruit everybody. And I'd also say, make a survey of all your special education staff and say, what is, what are the hindrances in your job? What can we do to make it better, to make sure that you stay? Because if you leave, and they know they leave, kids are gonna get hurt. But sometimes, people are bailing because I've got my own family, I've got my own kids. If you don't respect me, if you don't pay me, if I can't pay my bills, then I'm gonna go to another district that's gonna be forthcoming and is gonna work with me and respect what I bring to the table.
Thank you for all that information. That's very good information. I thought, I've heard this before, yes, I did hear it before. But thank you for the information. We definitely like to inform our parents of everything that is going on. And with the hiring of the other teacher who's coming in January after winter break, that site will have a full staff of teachers.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Marga, and I am a mother of two students that attend El Gavilan Elementary School, of which one of my children are enrolled in the special education program. I'm not only here to advocate for my children myself, but the other children, the other parents, and the staff would do as much as they can without the necessary support provided. We, as parents, would like classroom visitations at our site. We're not allowed to be inside. They don't let us come inside to volunteer our time, and we ask repeatedly. And it's upsetting. Some of our children are lack, sorry, communication skills. And so I don't feel that I can appropriately advocate for our children if I can't be in their environment and see what is being taught to our children. And my son, he has behaviors where he, like, doesn't want to go to school or he started to hit himself. He's never done that before. And it's concerning because I'm not allowed to be in there to help with my children, and I see them every day. All the kids are so happy and stuff, and it's so hard to see my son not want to go to school. And also, if it is an issue where parents aren't allowed in the classrooms, I would like to suggest that there be live feed cameras so that we could see what's going on. I have heard other parents, we get together after school or before school a lot of the days, meeting the mothers and the fathers, and we discuss these issues that our children are having. And we discuss these issues that our children are having. And it's very unfortunate and it's really unacceptable, the amount of times that the children are being repetitively, repetitively, they're having altercations with each other and it's very, it's just out of hand. I don't feel like it should be going on this far. My son has been, come home with like a bloody face, he was pushed off the playground, which I don't blame the child. I understand it's hard and stuff. But it's just so many issues that need to be addressed. And I don't feel comfortable not being able to see my child in that environment or be able to help and, and help the teachers who need help. If I can offer my time, I want to be there to help.
So we did, we do have a visitation policy. I thought we sent that out. It's sounding like we didn't. So we will send that out. And definitely, we can have you visit the classrooms with an administrator for a certain length of time. There are some very specific standards that we have to go by because we don't want interaction to interrupt the class. But definitely, we had already decided to do that. We do have some Zoom people that have questions.
So we have a comment and a question right here from Suli Orozco. She says, I'm so glad that my son has a permanent teacher now at Roosevelt. What about pares at the after-school program? She was asking for some clarification.
So the after-school programs, they, they are open to all students. When we know that we have a student that might need support in the after-school program, we have our staff as well as the after-school program staff start looking for the pares that work with our children to see if they want those extra hours to work. Some of them have picked it up. It's like a second job. So they, they work during the day and then they, they work, they roll it over to our after-school sessions as well. There are times when we can't get a person, one person, to stay with one child. And so we do have to kind of rotate those, those adults when we do that. Quick comment?
Quick question. I know with COVID, things changed or whatever, but there's always been parent volunteers in the classroom. And I could even understand not having volunteers in the parents' child's classroom because that could be a disruption. But if you have a base of parents that are willing and ready to volunteer at any time, I think they should be, they should be welcomed into a school. But especially if you're talking about bloody noses, pushing down things, I could understand not wanting parents to see maybe some of the things are happening. But they could be part of the solution while we're trying to, while you're trying to figure out ultimately having qualified, consistent staff in the classroom. So I think you should relook at that policy because you actually have people here that I think, that not everyone can do with their work schedule. But if you've got some parents that are willing, you know what, like, I know, I know parents volunteer all the time in the classroom. Grandparents volunteer all the time in the classroom. They may have to go through a background check, they may have to do fingerprints, yada, yada, yada. But I think right now, from what I hear, there will be a lot of parents that will be very happy to have, to help or have somebody that, that cares that will help in the interim until we get the, the staff that we need.
As I said, we, we are fully staffed with pares. And we are fully staffed now with teachers. So we do have that. We are fully staffed.
Are they being supervised properly?
They, we, they are and we are working on it, okay? Any other questions from Zoom?
Yes, we have a question here from Mireia Reyes. She's asking, are classroom teachers, RSP teachers and RSP aides working coordinate in a collaborative way as a team to support each RSP student? And are you getting feedback from the RSP aides since they're the ones providing one-on-one or one-to-one support for students?
So the RSP teachers are working with our general education teachers, definitely collaboratively. What we do in special education is we don't generally carry over for RSP the lesson that the teacher is giving, what our job is or what their job is, is to remediate deficits so they can join in and participate in the general education core curriculum. So that's what they are doing. They have paraeducators that help them with that instruction. The paraeducators don't necessarily talk with the general teachers. They talk with their RSP teachers. And that person is, the case manager would be giving information to the, the rest of the team members.
We are here for all of our parents. And this is, as we shared, a beginning. And a beginning of being able to actually resolve together all of our challenges and finding solutions. I want to be able to introduce, thank you so much, Adriana de los Santos, who is one of our parents that has been helping us co-develop and co-design these meetings that we'll be initiating. So Adriana, please help us here. And thank you as well for all of your work behind the scenes.
Thank you. I want to thank you and everyone who helped and came out today, especially the parents. This is something new and I think together we'll make changes. And I look forward to the next meeting.
Yes, which we will I'm here. I'm happy to be here to answer more questions. We will collect them as well, but I want to honor and respect our parents' time. And we had said, so I'll just turn it over to you, but I didn't want to hold anyone hostage.
So I, I don't either. I'm watching the time. So what I, the last thing I want to tell you is that we have developed and are developing a parent collaboration committee. And we take all of these suggestions and these concerns. And we are building what we call a master plan for special education. And that committee, along with some other educators, will be finding ways to move forward with that plan in making our special education department better. And, and with that master plan, looking at, not only, I, I'm all about compliance, but you know, we want to make everybody compliant. But we also want to help make everybody, everybody's lives a little bit better as well. Okay, I will be here afterwards. I am going to officially close the meeting. But I am here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you so much for all of your input. We do have people that are writing them down. And you know what, I don't think I introduced our coordinators. So we have Brendan Bloomsweeney over there. He has half of our schools. And you have John Daley over here. He has the other half of our schools. And they do work with our parents and teachers and with the IEP teams. So if you have questions, just ask who the coordinator is at your school. And they're, they're very happy to help in any way that they can as well.